The August 18th, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11th, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Molnar, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go with the closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussion to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Additionally, there may be discussions concerning potential legal matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? I have a motion, Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Treebrosser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
Some motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Treebrosser. Any opposed? Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Carry. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion.
I have a motion for Ms. Perez. I have a second for Ms. DeLa Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids. On August 16th, 2022, we opened IFB 2315 for student transportation services, IFB 2316 for student transportation services for special education, and IFB 2317 student transportation services for athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of June 2022.
Mr. President, I present the student registers and files your report, the suspension reports for elementary and secondary students, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at these Board of Education meetings. Members of public are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item number you wish to discuss, as per Regulation 1100D. Comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Seeing no comments. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 17 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebrosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Mr. President, I have stayed on item number 17, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Policy and planning agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 12 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Curriculum agenda, Mr. Treebrosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 25 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebrosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Finance and insurance agenda, Mr. Treebrosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 12 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebrosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Technology agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator present the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Treebrosser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Transportation agenda, Mr. DeLa Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. DeLa Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Treebrosser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Equity Commission agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion from Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving 37 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, Molnar, and a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebrosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Blackburn, do you have any recommendations for the Board?
No, not tonight.
Is there any old business that needs to be brought to the attention of the Board? Is there any new business that needs to be brought to the attention of the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Just one item this evening, well, two items. Located on the district website, as well as on TV 35, following the production of this video, will be the district's class of 2022 college acceptance, trade school admission, and military enlistment list that's produced annually by our three high schools' guidance departments. It will be, if you haven't already seen it on the district website, it will be on the TV 35, and I want to thank TV 35 for putting that up. So, we're very proud of our students, and it's a very robust and impressive list of where our students will be heading this fall. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, yeah, I did have that one question. Dr. Massimino, I meant to grab you earlier. Whether tomorrow or perhaps next week, I see you on Facebook a lot, a lot of parents, you know, some of the moms groups, which they accepted me into, believe it or not, and some of the other community groups, there's a lot of questions about when orientations will be taking place, you know, time, place, different grade levels. I don't have any of the answers. I don't know if there's a mass communication that will be going out, if that's district-wide or individual school bases. There seems to be some confusion out there.
Sure. Mr. Harris, that's an individual school-based decision.
Okay.
I will be reminding the principals, as we always do at the annual administrators' meeting next week, to make sure that they share all that information.
Sure.
So, we meet August 25th with all the administrators, so I would plan on any notices coming out to the public regarding orientations or open houses, things of that nature, come directly from the school.
Great, all right, very good. So, perhaps late next week or early the following week, when those will be communicated?
I would say that to save some.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have had the full, completely, have fully completed your comments, as to not interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Hi, my name is Angela Peterson. I live in Island. My daughter attends Oak Tree Road School 29, and she'll be in first grade this year. So, please forgive me, this is my first school board meeting, and I am a little nervous about speaking in front of a group of people. So, I came to the board meeting this evening to just bring a situation to your attention, and I don't know if there's, if you guys are aware of it, and maybe if there's a resolution. So, this year, the district is going to be providing before care at, I believe, 11 out of the 17 elementary schools, and my school unfortunately is not one of the schools where there will be a morning care program. And there was last year, and I understand there were a lot of staffing difficulties and some transportation issues, understandably. What we were hoping is that there might be a provision or some opportunity for the kids that are in the schools that don't have the program on site. So, I spoke with the head of aftercare, Mr. Keischer, who was very responsive, and he just let me know that unfortunately, right now, there is not any way for my daughter to attend before care at an alternative site, and our only option would be to go with a private provider. And so, unfortunately, we were able to find a private provider, but it's going to be like about two to three times more expensive for us. My husband works in the district. If you guys live here, he might have clouded your roads in the wintertime. So, you know, we have access to transportation. If that is, you know, a possibility for us to send her to a different school, we're just told that right now, there's just no option for us, unfortunately, that live in that area. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Massimino?
Ms. Peterson, thank you. So, I'm going to run through, I'm just going to backtrack just a little bit.
Please.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
So, when you say 11 of our 17 schools, that includes both, just so that we're both on the same page, what the YMCA offers?
Yes, it does.
And what we, as a district, started to offer last year in response to the pandemic?
Yes, it does. Yes, absolutely.
So, how, and I just want to explain the process to you, so you're aware of how we go about making these decisions.
Mm-hmm.
The before-care program that we offer in district is like the after-care program in a sense of it's self-sustaining.
Yes.
So, if we don't have the students enrolled to substantiate the staff, we can't run the program because it has to be self-sustaining.
Absolutely.
So, we have put out a survey to School 29, it's one of our bigger schools, that will be coming out to see if there's any parents that maybe could utilize it, that haven't realized that that's an option if we can, I'm going to be honest with you, we were never in the before-care business.
I know.
That was always something that the YMCA took care of, obviously, because it's outside. We recognize the need, you know, kudos to Dr. Gencarelli last year, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, because we really did pull the sites together. I know that's not comforting because we don't have it this year, so I understand the frustration. What we are looking to do is survey those schools that we don't have it to see if there is a need, you know, you never know, parents, things change. The other thing we're doing is talking with the YMCA. It does take a while for site licenses to come through, but we're happy to continue to partner with them, for them to expand their operation. We got into the before-care business, so to speak, and I hate using that, but because the YMCA was also suffering from, they couldn't find a bus driver, having difficulty staffing, so we also have that. The third kind of variable that makes it difficult is before care, when the buses would come, is when the other levels, high school, middle school, elementary, we're in that middle zone, we don't have a lot of drivers. So, it's kind of the perfect storm of when it's tough, it gets really tough. What I can tell you is, I talked to Dr. Gencarelli about this several times this week, we are putting that survey out within the upcoming days. If we can get the students to realize, we will ask every staff member in the district, obviously, we'd like to start with the homeschool because that's, but however we can, if we can staff it, we will staff it, as long as it's self-sustaining. If the YMCA can get a site license, and we can come up with a plan with them, we're happy to continue partnering with them. So, we're going to continue to look at all of these different options. We work with our transportation director to see if anything shifts. So, if you know anybody that is looking to get a job as a bus driver, by all means, we set them the R.O.A. But I am aware of it, and it is something that, listen, ideally, we would have before care in all of our schools. I have two kids in the system, I paid for before care, I paid for aftercare, so I certainly understand the dynamic of trying to get the hustle-bustle done, but we are working on it. Once we get those results, we'll release what we can do to the School 29 community, and we'll explore other avenues if that one doesn't seem like it's going to come to fruition.
Yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I just wasn't sure if anybody was aware, and I didn't hear among the various options that you said that you would explore, maybe potentially allowing us to send her to before care, like, say, at Robert McCenick, and then providing our own transportation to pick her up. I don't know if that would be, or another school that is, I only say Robert McCenick because it's right around the corner, but another site that is offering the before care, would it be a possibility for us to send her there and then provide our own transportation to move her to school at 8:45? But if that were like the worst-case scenario?
Yeah, I'll be honest, we look at everything, whatever we can make work, we're happy to make work, we understand that sometimes it doesn't look the same in every school based on, you know, the resource, if we can get teachers here or there, so we'll put all our efforts into that, and whatever we can offer, we're happy to.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for all of your work for the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino.
Start the clock again, hold on, make sure this is all lined up. It's my first time, I don't want to waste my minute. So, my name's Scott Gorich, I live on Barron and High, a relatively new resident, about four years, four and change years here. I am not a fan of this format, I will likely send an email to Mr. Wolfman and Massimino to set time to speak about the things I want to speak about. I've got young kids, they're not in the system yet, which is why I've never really paid attention to stuff until I've had kids. I'm originally from Jersey City, I was never a property owner. Now that I am a property owner, being here four years, my taxes have gone up significantly in the last four years, so I haven't really paid attention. What I want to talk about is, some of you are probably aware of what has happened in Jersey City over the last few years, and we're actually a recipient of some of what happened in Jersey City over the last few years. Over 30 years, the mayor's abused tax abatements, and zero percentage of that money would go to schools, but it was a way to build money for the city coffers, all on the premise that the state was going to keep funding them. It was an Abbott district, and at the time that I lived, I'm born and raised there, it was about $500 million of the $700 million was funded by the state. I'm a paranoid person, I think about worst-case scenarios, and I got to know my council people and the mayor and all this sort of stuff, Mayor Philip and all these people, and I was warning for years that the strategy of them increasing their budgets at the rate they were was a house of cards. Nobody listened. And then what happened? The state is pulling hundreds of millions of dollars out of Jersey City, and luckily, I lucked out because a good chunk of that is coming here. We're one of the bigger recipients, as you know. I was disappointed when I looked at the budget presentation, and I saw that we got an additional $20 million in aid, and I looked at the taxpayer proportion, and I thought, great, we're going to get it reduced by $20 million, but instead, the budget increased by $20 million. I don't like where this is heading. I'm seeing a lot of patterns here that I saw in real time and experienced in Jersey City, and I like to think of state aid as here today possibly gone tomorrow. And if the day comes, whether it's a Republican governor, whatever the reason, that money is not guaranteed, and one day, I'm going to have to pay for that and make up that difference if those formulas change. So, I've got a lot of questions that I'm going to ask, and I hope we can, I wish it was more of a discussion. But I looked at that, why, what is the best way to get a line-item-by-line-item breakdown of what we're spending $20 million additional dollars on? I've never spent the kind of money I've spent on property taxes and not known exactly what I'm getting for it. What is the best way to get a full breakdown of all of the staff, salaries, qualifications? Because when I moved here and I talked to people who were either running for the board and people like this, there is a perception that the school system is a little bit of a patron's mill. I'm saying this by what I hear, this is not my opinion, I'm telling you what is said, that there's, you know, Friends of Mac and all these other things, and that we are a very bloated district for what we get for it. What is the best place to get a breakdown of what these expenditures are? Because I looked at the budget, I've seen some salaries, I saw some breakdowns, and admittedly, I was a little bit surprised at the level at which we spend. Is it standard practice that executive admins and all these people get 25 days off, 12 sick days, in addition to what I assume is the 101 days off for the summer, which equates, when you do the math, on what that equates to what someone would make in a full year? These things seem really high. I want to understand what exactly we're spending on. What is also the best way for me as a parent of a two- and three-year-old to get an objective look at how our schools perform? Because I look online, and I see all these lists and scores, and they base it on this, and they base it on that. It's very difficult to get an understanding of exactly what kind of quality of education my children might get, and we are actually contemplating homeschooling. Because I have, everyone's kids are advanced, everyone's kids are smart, mine are quite good. And I was a product of public education in Jersey City, clearly, my attitude. But I was very bored, I was always in the 99th percentile, my parents couldn't afford to send me to private school, I got in a lot of trouble because it wasn't challenging enough. And we, sometimes the school districts would focus on things that just, quite frankly, don't make somebody a marketable person with marketable skills in the job market in the future. And I'm not here to talk about politics or politicization of classes or any of those things, it's not my interest right now.[1420.16] make somebody a marketable person with marketable skills in the job market in the future. And I'm not here to talk about politics or politicization of classes or any of those things. It's not my interest right now. I want to understand better how the abatements, I don't know, I think this was something I talked to McCormick about before. I don't remember. I know if I recall, he does. Abatements do give some to schools here. I could be wrong on that. How do I know, how can I find out more about how the abatements break down versus eratable? Because, again, I am not anti-development. I wanted downtown. I don't want to go to Cranford and Westfield and all these places, to go to a nice place to eat. I'm pro-downtown, and I'm going to address the city council on abatements. I am also very well aware that, just like in Jersey City, Jersey City was 30 years from having their last revale, and we're next in line. And everyone keeps saying, like I said in Jersey City, it's not going to happen. McCormick tells me it's never going to happen.
All right. Sorry, your five minutes are up, but we'll try to address the questions that you got through right now. And then, you know, you can always email Dr. Massimino and Mr. Wolferman.
And again, I'm just here to learn and understand. Not that my opinion on it is going to change anything, but I want people to be aware of these dynamics and mechanics about revales and all these things, because I don't think many people do.
All right, thank you. Dr. Massimino or Mr. Wolferman?
I'll start. What I can tell you is, we can set up a meeting. Technically, to see a line item budget, by law, you're supposed to come in and sit with me and we go over it.
That said, if you want to come in and meet with me and we can discuss a wide variety of these topics, the financial ones at least, I'm happy to meet with you.
Send me an email. You can send me questions there. You can send me times you're available. I'm happy to meet with you. We can go over all these questions that you did have. I don't think it's something I can give you all the answers right now, but I'm happy to meet with you.
Yes. Of course, I would offer to jump into that meeting. This way, you didn't have to, you know, I mean, your time is valuable too, so I don't want to waste your time and have to come back. So if you have your questions, you want to set up a meeting with Mr. Wolferman, I'm happy to coordinate with Mr. Wolferman to jump into that meeting so that the non-specific financial questions that you may have about contracts and vacation, things of that nature, I'll give you whatever I can.
Because I'm a true neophyte. I don't know about unions and all these things.
I'm happy to give you the overview and answer as specifically as I can.
Because you can understand, I talked to the mayor and people, and then when I asked, why are my taxes low, they point to the BOE building. And I get it's the city too. It's not just, I don't demonize it and all this. I need to understand it. But can you at least just answer the two conceptual questions about, you know, why did we, why are we spending 20 additional million instead of maybe giving a break to the taxpayers? But then, secondly, in the, I'm forgetting the other question I was going to have. Can you talk to that? And can you talk to, I don't remember the other one that you could answer here that isn't specific to that? Can you just talk to that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, so we go up 2%, right, for the local tax levy, and things don't go up 2%. They certainly haven't gone up 2% in the last.
No, they have not.
So when you talk about salaries and healthcare costs and things of that nature, new personnel, new programs that require new personnel, things of this nature, it's comprehensive. So I couldn't give you one thing to say, this was our $20 million project, but there are a series of ancillary costs and personnel costs and curriculum costs that add up to what we got in terms of the state aid. So I probably couldn't break down the specifics here without anything in front of me, but like I said, I'm happy to prepare that information so that when we do sit down, I could give you the, an accurate description.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just jumping in quickly, just so you understand, we are capped at 2%, as Dr. Massimino said. And just keep in mind, if we ever were to go below that 2%, then all future years, that cap would then become lower. But we can talk about more when we meet.
But it's almost like finding expenses to spend on. As, you see, like, you see from a, just from an outsider's perspective, it's like, I get if we don't spend it, we lose it, or we don't get the same and all that. I get that. Of course, all my kids have everything as much as possible. I don't mean to jeopardize the time. I'm sorry. It's just, you know, yet, you know, significantly each year, and that's for the city and the tax address.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but your time's up. Somebody else wants to speak.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris.
I wanted to just also just jump in. I didn't catch your name, but I.
Scott.
Scott, nice to meet you. On the 20 million in additional aid, so last year, we received about 60, 61, and then this year, we went up to, I think it was $80.3 million in state aid. And as you had rightfully pointed out, Jersey City is now losing money because the city is wealthier, higher income taxes, higher property values there. It's one of the reasons their number is down. And as you had rightly pointed out, Woodbridge is now a beneficiary of that. It's because we were being underfunded so much for so long. The number we should be getting annually from the state of New Jersey fluctuates, it should be about 87, 89, or 87, 89 million dollars. The number fluctuates every year because our student profile changes marginally every year. So the spending of an additional $20 million, the additional money that we got, we put it right back into the budget, is because we've been underfunded chronically for 20-plus years. So we put that money right into the things that we hadn't been able to afford previously, as well as, as Dr. Massimino and Mr. Wolferman will point out to you when you meet, many of the things we spent money on were additional supports, social workers, additional guidance council, things that will augment the student experience. And then, just on pilots that you touched on, I'm sure.
That was the other one, yeah. Just do we know what goes, do we carve anything out for the schools, unlike Jersey City, zero?
Sure, exactly. As you may know, by law, when a municipality makes a deal on a payment in lieu of taxes, 95% of the money goes to the municipality and 5% goes to the county. That's the only breakup as far as pilot money goes. Since you're newer to the community, what Mayor McCormick's been doing since, you have Mayor McCormick and the council, they work in tandem since, I don't know, 2011, 2013, they have been taking some of the pilot revenue and using it on school district properties. The initial tranche was on all the different athletic facilities that you see around town. They're for community use. So the McCormick administration and the council put that money towards new fields, whether football fields at our high school, baseball fields, other community use benefits, air conditioning and enhancements of our auditoriums. And in 2017 and 2020, the two bond referendums that we did, the council, the mayor, and this board, we have agreements in place that the revenue from those pilot agreements will pay for the debt service associated with the borrowing. For example, this school in 20, was part of the 2017 referendum as well, Woodbridge Middle School, which.
But I thought it was the sale of properties that was going to pay for the debt. I attended those meetings back then, but I, we can talk, I'll talk you online.
Yeah, we can talk.
But so just the bottom line, you're saying that the pilot money is still 95.5, that so of the 300-some-a-million, zero of that is going to that, but it's going to school-related things?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
So that's a little bit of sleight of hand of what was explained to me by the mayor and others, that no, we dedicate some to the schools, which maybe we're six of us.
No, no, no. It is, and I apologize. Mr. President, your first time at the board meeting here, we normally don't engage beyond your remarks. It's fairness to the guys who are normally here. I, you know, I'm sure they're nodding their head one side. You know, normally, we don't have this kind of engagement. I apologize. And again, we'll talk afterwards. Just on the pilot money for 2017 and 2020, out of the goodness of their hearts, so to speak, like you said, in Jersey City, they've been pumping up the police department and other municipal services. Instead of doing that, the municipality and the school district work together to enhance the school district's experience with that infusion of cash paying down the debt service on new buildings such as this building, the significant renovation to Woodbridge Middle School, the additions on to School 28, School 25, and so, as well as the future, you know, the new School 4 and 5 in the Avonell section of the community. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate that, since you had brought that up, how, yes, pilots have gone on, but rather than the money go to the municipality, the municipality is sharing it with us for the enhancement of our district, such as these new facilities. And again, Mr. Wolferman and Dr. Massimino could speak to greater detail to you.
All right, thank you.
I'd be happy to talk to you in the future as well. Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to make sure we treat one constituent differently than others.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Jarrod, Jarrod Woodbridge. I want to bring a couple minutes back what went on. I asked a couple of questions about insurance, student insurance. And I believe Mr. Wolf said it's a student insurance. What is actually student insurance? What does it cover? What's it for? I thought anybody that goes through anybody's property or school, anybody else, would make insured. What are we talking about that students are insured? For what?
Is that your only question, Mr. Vitar?
No, that's not my only question.
Okay, that's your only question?
That's one question. Mr. Anderson, Danny, said last year, the schools had a problem with ventilation system. They were not properly designed, I guess what you want to call it. And I asked at that time, what would be expense? It's substantial, pretty high. Now, what I'm bringing out is now that last year or this year, we had a problem in Colonia and most of the schools. How do we know? Because we don't have any kind of monitoring system to those schools. You only respond when things happen. Why don't we enable each of the schools, like we have a community center? We got all kinds of devices to measure the maintain gas, whatever you want to call it, it's on that building. I think in the future, all the buildings, especially the schools, should be built, and every building should be designed differently. If you're next to high traffic, if you're next to chemical plant, if you were toxic land or anything else, we should have devices that will monitor whatever's sitting over here. If something like a fire, if there's something, gas or any kind of chemicals will be seeping into the building, especially the kids, you should, we should know. The kids know, you should know. Don't wait until a pandemic comes or something like that to be thinking. Now, the schools are opening up next two weeks. I went through this tonight. You talk about fixing the kitchens, you talk about doing this, one of this and that. Nothing's really done to what I just mentioned before. Are we, is the school safe enough from any kind of incidents what we had last year, previous school year? They won't happen again. Are we ready to detect if anything happens before it happens? That's my question. And that's the thing that we should look into it from now on. Like, if you look at the federal buildings, all those buildings, all over U.S. Embassy, U.S. structures, buildings all over the world, they are built to detect any kind of pollution, poisoning, or anything else, especially the kids. We should be ready for something. It should be put right into the system, into the schools when you build them. And now you're building the school in Avonell, 45, next to 1.3 million square feet warehouse. I know what's stopping it, but it's not going through. But I understand, right along the school, you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of trucks going to drive right by the school. Number one. Number two, what do the people put in warehouses? And I came from Europe, and I want to tell you what they put in warehouses. We don't know what's going to be in those warehouses. Maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but eventually, we don't know what's going to be in those warehouses. There could be a bomb. But again, you're going to have trucks in and out, 100 feet from the schools will be a driveway, or maybe 50 feet. We should take all the consideration when you build a schools. But again, like I said, build them for tomorrow. Just don't build them, make them look pretty, make it food efficient. But again, any danger, because what is most precious things, most valuable things we've got is our children. And what happened in Colonia, did not happen in Colonia. It could have happened 20, 30 years ago, but where? Someplace in Woodbridge. And let's hope we find out where. That's another question. But I would like to know, again, Mr. Harris said last time we were here, because DDI and all this stuff, people talk about it, they be hard, hard time getting the new teachers. Yes, we do. And I did say that time, that I would say, what I, my opinion is why? Why do they have a hard time getting policemen? Why do they have a hard time getting fire department, state troopers, and the teachers? Very simple. If you are a plumber or a kind of trees, nobody tells you what to do. You do your job because nobody want to fear. But if you are a teacher and a police and those things, they changed the laws. They didn't go to school to teach, to learn DRI, to teach how to math, science, whatever it is. And you tell them what to do, they don't feel comfortable because we interfere to tell them what to do, the jobs. Nobody want to be told at the professional what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Vitar.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for some of your comments, and we'll try to address some of your questions. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Vitar, I'll address the, whenever we're looking to upgrade any kind of schools, we're obviously working with architects and engineers to have whatever is the most current technology out. Obviously, we don't, I'm not a buildings and grounds expert, so I couldn't tell you what that technology is. But there are mandates by the state that we submit certain reports, have certain things evaluated on a yearly basis. It's a rather sizable list, so I couldn't rattle it off the top of my head. But I'll certainly take your statement under advisement that, you know, if we are doing construction and expanding the school and we can upgrade everything, we are always looking to do that. Anything we can do to keep our kids safe, we're always in favor of because they're our students. With regards to the student insurance, if a student gets hurt playing football, if a student trips walking down the hallway, we need to make sure that we have insurance for them. So when you talk about the student insurance, that's in the event that, for the student, if they were to get hurt on our grounds, that we could assist them with any of the costs of that medical attention.
That's it. How about the student molested? How about the student, something else happened to the student?
Did you say student molested?
Yeah.
I don't think that, I'm not sure how that pertains to this kind of insurance.
Well, it's happened everywhere, school property.
Yeah, if they get injured playing football or in the course of the day. We're talking about a criminal act.
Well, yeah, but that's injury, but I'm talking about like psychological, psychological hurt because somebody abused the child or somebody's.
Yeah, that's a different, I don't think we're talking about the.
Accident insurance versus a criminal offense or a crime.
Right.
It's different.
That doesn't cover it.
Well, I'm not sure on that. It depends on the circumstances.
There's other, there would be other insurance that would cover something that occurred under that.
Yeah, but you do have other insurance.
We're mandated to.
Yeah, okay.
Every school district.
Now, may I get something again about the, you see, when I talk about schools, you talk about state.
I'm sorry, Mr., your time is up. You can always call us or email us, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to get clarity on the beginning of his statement. I wasn't sure if he was referencing something that I said last year. Ms. Lanigan, can you read back that statement? Or I just want to make sure, because I thought I heard him say, Ms. Anderson? Okay, just want to make sure.
I thought the same thing.
I thought so too, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Just a misunderstanding. All right, thank you.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Forbes New Jersey. I'd like to take a moment to thank the lady that came up. She's left, but it's nice to see parents coming out and expressing themselves, certainly this gentleman. After years of talking about tax abatements, it's refreshing to see a citizen actually come out and question what's going on. And I think he's going to be quite surprised when he gets into it, exactly what he will learn. That said, at the last, well, what I'd like to ask in way of questions is, the current status of the sale of the Ross Street School parking lot, whether it's going to be sold to the McCormick administration and/or one of his chosen developers? Another question is, as far as COVID is concerned, I think we're all aware that the CDC is finally fessing up that they completely blew it, and they made a debacle of it, and now they're backpedaling like crazy. That said, what are the plans for the school district for '22, '23 school year? And how much credence will you give the CDC going forward with whatever new guidelines they may come out with? Mr. Al, pardon me, I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying something. And by the way, lest I forget, Mr. Paul Lund wishes he could be here tonight, but he wanted me to say exactly this, that he's busy planning more parental rights rallies. As you may know, that he had one last Sunday, and it was quite informative, and I think a lot of people learned a lot from it and the speakers that were there. Again, going back, Mr. Ali recently stated in response to a question regarding racism that is important for him to know racism manifests, how racism may manifest itself in a school system. Please explain exactly how Mr. Ali can make that determination, where and if at all, has he found it to exist in the Woodbridge School District? This is a statement, at a recent, I'm at the last school meeting, I offered an apology to anyone that I have may have offended with any of the questions that I directed. I said they were not personal, they were not meant to be malicious in any manner, and yet, one of the board members challenged me on that later on when I was not able to defend myself. And in fact, I wasn't even allowed to speak to him at the end of the meeting, and I was told by security that I cannot approach any member of the board. I'd like to know if that's your new policy, that we can't speak to you outside of these meetings on a one-to-one basis in an obviously professional and nonderogatory manner? That said, if I did say anything that somebody found offensive, as far as I'm concerned, I was speaking to the truth. And if the truth hurts, I don't want to apologize for that. We've also brought up, and I left a copy for Dr. Massimino, the Center for Garden State Families has issued or published, put out a publication that says Sex Education Standards for New Jersey Government Schools, Academic Year '21, '22. I'm not going to belabor it right now, but I certainly would like to talk further about that. And I would request that you make a copy of it and disseminate it to the board and to perhaps some of your faculty and members, whoever you may choose. But I think it's highly important, and I think this board should look at it and be able to speak to it at future meetings, because I can guarantee you, it's going to come up in discussions. Also, I noticed some blowback when we brought up the subject of bringing cameras into the classrooms. National organizations are now pushing for that, and I fully respect everything that was said by some of the parties that were trying to say why we shouldn't. Obviously, we have to be very careful about children and having them exposed on TV. That said, we can also refer to, I mean, use closed systems where it's not broadcast to the public, but it does become a record that the school can maintain. It allows the supervision of teachers in the classrooms, and I see nothing wrong with that. We certainly went through that when they had to go through in, I'm sorry, we didn't have in-school education. Everything was done by video. Obviously, the teachers were on video camera at that point in time. Again, with all due respect, it's a noble profession. They are, however, employees, and their employers have a right to know what they're doing and look and see in the classroom, which might well actually defend them and protect them should some parent or anyone else come in or for security reasons and challenge that teacher in what they have done or what they have said or how they're teaching something. With that said, I'll close, and I'll wait for your responses to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Maris, thank you. This is a pamphlet, so I'm not sure how, I don't know if you have others like this that you'd like to distribute to the board, that you're welcome.
I can try and get more for you if you can't copy it.
Yeah, I would say if you'd like to give it to the board, by all means, feel free to give it to the board. I'm not going to give it to the staff because you're giving it to the board, so it's something that, if you'd like us to review, I'm happy to read it. In response to your statement up, Mr. Ali, Mr. Ali's not here tonight. I'm not going to speak for him. If you'd like to send him an email to ask for clarity, by all means. If you'd like to wait till next board meeting, that's equally acceptable. We just got the same update everybody else did. The schools don't get any information from the CDC any earlier than anybody else. We are waiting for the New Jersey Department of Health. That has been the guide since the pandemic started in terms of how we do things. I will say, I am encouraged by what has been released, because it does look like it will open things up in terms of how we can operate as a school district. There's nothing, there's no joy or satisfaction any teacher, administrator, and nurse gets by telling a student in a close contact. And we all are aware of, you know, vaccinations and their purpose and quarantines, and I understand all that. I will say in my read of the overview, and then again, we get specific guidelines that are specific to K-12 education. So I will wait for that before I send any notice to the parents. That's been my standard practice since I took over. But it does look promising that it does open things up. It is a lot more lenient. You know, when it comes to things such as masks, I respect individual choice. The second that it became optional, we made it optional. I believe the CDC is really moving away from the contact tracing, quarantining way of looking at this, and it's become more of a, it's something we're going to have to learn to live with, which I believe we are going to have to learn to live with it. So I'm encouraged by things opening up. I always hate to say a return to normal, because it's a subjective term. I would say a return to pre-pandemic, where there wasn't this concern about, there's a new set of rules, and are they going to change and are they going to shift? That being said, and I'm going to qualify my statement, if in two months, there is a massive outbreak, and I believe it puts our students, our staff, or our faculty in jeopardy, we are going to follow whatever new guidelines come out from the Department of Health, because we are obligated, I believe, both morally and legally, to provide the safest environment possible.
I totally concur, sir.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
I totally concur with you on that.
Okay, so that's just, I don't want to say we're doing this right now. Nothing is forever. I--
Best efforts.
Wish nothing more, that everything continues as is, going in the right direction so that our students aren't limited by any rules and things of that nature, but I do understand why they were put in place. You know, there's going to be people that support one side, there's going to be people that support another side. I respect both opinions, but at the end of the day, we have to figure out how to manage almost 14,000 students in 25 buildings, so--
You have to make it work.
Yes, sir. So, like I said, I'm encouraged, I'm optimistic about things starting to open up, because I think our students instead would like nothing more. But ultimately, I'll wait for the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health, speak with our colleagues, speak with our healthcare experts, and make sure that whatever we put out is consistent with being in the best interest of students.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Maris, I just want to clarify. What I had said to you at the last meeting was, regardless of how you interpret something to be perceived or accepted, does not, is not relevant. It's how the person who hears it interprets it. And if they interpret what you say as being offensive or racist, then it is, regardless of how you feel about it. And I said to you, please talk to me, sir, and we can straighten it out, and I could clarify, and you didn't have the dignity to do that. Thank you. And then, as far as you wanting to approach the dais, I believe security told you camp, but you could speak to me anytime after any meeting. I am more than happy to talk with you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Anderson?
Just want to add to the first comment about, I can't speak for Mr. Ali, he's not here, but I do want to explain that back in June of 2020, July 2020, we had several, the public came to us with quite a few incidences. As a result, we set up our Equity Commission on the Board, which is a committee on the Board. So our governance structure was that we wanted the public to be able to tell us any incidences that they might be receiving that may have an uncomfortable situation for a student or for a parent. So we established our Equity Commission, and then from there, we had our school equity teams, and then we have our school diversity councils, where it's a place where parents and students can come and say, if there's things that happen to them in school, they have a place that they can tell us. We also have a link on our website. There's a form, an anonymous form, that someone can say, this happened to me while I was in school. So I just want to just make sure that that was clear, that we do have a governance structure to capture any of those types of incidents within our district.
Thank you for that explanation, and I applaud it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Hi, good evening to the board. My name is Marana Sousa. I live in Colonia. Number question, number one question, transportation for high school. Second question, on your building and guiding grounds, number five, said something about the bathroom, toiletry facility for pre-K and kindergarten. I have a question on that. Vaccine mandate for our high school kids, our middle school kids? And gender identity, will that be a curriculum in the school district? Will they teach our kids about gender identity? I have seen, I have heard people saying that in New Jersey, they made a big deal out of it, and that's a question, personal question for me. I think that our kids are in school to learn A, B, C, one, two, three, not their gender identity. Thank you very much.
You're complete, that's--
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Massimino?
Gender identity is one of the topics that is discussed. I don't have the standards in front of me, so I couldn't tell you what level that occurs at, but it is one of the newer state standards that the state has rolled out. We've discussed this at prior meetings, but I'll revert back a little bit. We are working, our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Posterino, is working with our supervisors and our teachers to update our curriculum, to reflect the new state standards as we do any new standards with any of our curricula. So that is associated with, if you want to reach out to Mr. Posterino, he would be able to give you more specific information, obviously, when we have everything in front of us. You mentioned something about--
Transportation. There's no transportation for high school kids in Colonia. We pay to be our taxpayers, but kids can't get a transportation. We have to drop our kids off to the high school, and I wonder why? Avonel goes to our Colonia High School, and they have buses. Why don't our kids do?
Our Colonia students do. There's usually a mileage radius that within a certain mile, their students are considered walkers, and outside of that, they receive a bus. I mean, there's certainly buses outside of Colonia High School--
In Colonia? For the people that live in Colonia?
Yes.
Hmm, that's interesting.
So I wouldn't, I don't know where you live in proximity to the school that, or if your residence location would--
I'll find out, because I called, and I like to communicate, I like to talk to my fellow neighbors, and for years, that's what they have told me, that the kids that live in Colonia, they have to walk or get a ride, because there's no bus for kids in Colonia. That's what they have told me.
Okay, and that may be true in that area because of the distance it is from the school, but without knowing specifically where--
Is it a two-mile radius? Because if I Google my house to the school--
Two and a half.
There's no bus. Like, the kids walk, 35, 40-minute walk, and rain, shine, I see them walking. I'm blessed that I have a privilege to drop my son off at school, but it's not fair, because we do pay taxes, and it's not cheap.
You also asked one more question about vaccinate--
Vaccinate? If the kids will be a vaccine mandate for kids, they have to get vaccinated for COVID. Let me--
No, there is no mandatory COVID vaccination.
Okay. And the bathroom on the number five, the building grounds, there's something that says about toileting facility for pre-K and kindergarten.
So the way the code reads is the bathroom needs to be in the room.
Okay.
So if the bathroom is in a, so if two classrooms, and there's a corridor that goes in, I'm just giving you an example, and there's a bathroom there, it's attached to the room, they would have to walk, you know, five feet outside of it, but it's technically in the room. That line item is talking about how we are still compliant with the law, but we have to put this on the agenda so that we're not, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. The bathroom's not in there, but it is where the teacher can take, okay, instead of standing in front of the wall, standing in the back of the room, I can watch the kids go to the bathroom.
Got it.
So that's the qualifier for that.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I wanted to jump in. On the bus, if you, for secondary, for elementary students, if you live beyond two miles from a school, we're required to provide a bus. If you're a secondary student, so that's grade six through 12, if you are more than two and a half, excuse me, if you're less than, excuse me, if you're more than two and a half, it's nine to 12, all right, thank you. John, could you please?
Sure. So the statute is, is 18A 391 dictates where we have to bus. So from K to eight is two miles or greater, and nine to 12 is two and a half miles or greater.
Two and a half, got it, understood.
So there are certain, there are certain parts of Colonia that do get bused, but they are on the borderline of--
But Island or Edison.
Or, yeah.
Yes.
So, I mean, and actually, I live in Colonia also, very close to Wood Avenue, and my children, all three of them went to Colonia High and Colonia Middle and did not get bused.
Right, yes.
And to top it off, I ran transportation.
Yeah, I know.
So I do understand, but if you want to talk about it more, feel free to email me. I'd be more than happy to review it with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your wonderful work.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Molner, second by Mr. De La Pietro. Call in favor?
I--
Any opposed?
[applause]